Turn your microphones on and set them all right in front of Nolan. We'd like to welcome everybody here to the Cache County Council. We appreciate all the fascinating attendance that we have here, and I'm sure everyone's online. So again, we appreciate that. Let's go ahead and we'll start by having our opening, and that'll be by Councilmember Carl Ward.
Well, I'll first start by just wishing everybody a Merry Christmas. Hope that you have a wonderful time with family and friends, and that we remember what, why we sell Christmas, or why we celebrate Christmas. And with that, I'll do my opening in the form of prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we come to Thee at the beginning of this county council meeting, and express to Thee our gratitude for being able to live in a place that is free, peaceful, and where Thy Spirit does dwell. We're thankful for the good people with whom we work, grateful for those who are continuing to strive to make our valley a better place. We pray that the contentions and the issues will be, come to fruition in a peaceful way, and that everything will work for the best good of all of our citizens. Bless us in the meeting tonight to have Thy Spirit to guide us, and bless us to be wise in the decisions we make. We ask these blessings upon, and blessings upon any who are facing significant challenges and special issues at this time, they will be blessed. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Will you join me in the fudge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We do have on the approval of the agenda, we do have a couple changes that need to be made in the form of an amendment, and one will be on 6C. That one will not occur tonight, so we can scratch that one. We'll have to do that by an amendment, and include it in that amendment on 10A. Instead of it saying ordinance 2023-45, it's actually resolution 2023-28. Is that right? And then the next thing where it says an ordinance creating, it'll be a resolution creating a countywide law. So I believe that was it. That's the only changes. I would accept those in the form of a motion as to amend the agenda.
Second it.
Moving second it, that we amend the agenda with those items which were just discussed with those changes. Is there any discussion on those? Hearing none, all will proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, I will still, I will now accept a motion for approval of the agenda as amended.
I'll move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the agenda with the amendments. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. How about the minutes?
Move approval of the minutes of our last meeting last Tuesday.
I'll second it.
Okay, can I throw one little instance or change in there? Down there, it talks about on the report of the executive, it says talked about the homeowners association meeting. I don't think that's homeowners association.
Homeless.
Home builders.
Home builders.
Home builders.
Yeah, that you attended, Sandy, and so I think just that change should be made. Other than that, I think the rest of them, for me, was okay. Will you take that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Change, okay.
Thank you for catching that.
Yep.
Is there a second on that, did I hear? Okay, been moving second that we accept the minutes with that change. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Items of special, excuse me, reported the county executive.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair and Council. Just two quick items tonight. First, just want to mention, I was a meeting today with Russ Akina, who's here from Logan City, and Isa Hamud, who's the Environmental Services Director, and got to hear a little bit about some of their plans for recreational amenities, parking amenities, around the current landfill that is kind of being finished up with its use. And I thought it was really interesting and visionary and wonderful, actually, some of the plans they have. Love to have, maybe Russ could come back at some point in the future and give a presentation about some of the plans the city has for that area. It's really, it's a project that everyone in the community has contributed to, the landfill, I mean, building it up and building that mountain that will pretty soon be retired and closed down and rehabbed into some beautiful space. So that was one thing I just wanted to mention. And then I wanted to mention that Councilmember Buse and Maggie from our finance department, and a representative from Zions Bank, met yesterday with representatives from Moody's in San Francisco regarding our bond issuance for the open space. And we met with them about our credit rating for the county, and I think, I think everything went splendidly. The meeting went really well, and just, I wanted to thank Councilmember Buse and Maggie for their help. They did a fantastic job in their presentations, and I wanted to thank Zions Bank, probably as well, for all of their help and guidance and support in that process. So just, in general, I would say the meetings went very well. They, they hope to be back to us soon with our credit rating, and that will determine how much it costs us to borrow the money for the open space. And I think we'll do well in that. It sounded like they had a positive, a positive experience in our meeting. So just once again, thank you so much for your help. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Let's go to 6A. Russ, this is going to be your time to do things auctioneer style. So approval of the RAPS funding extension for certain projects. Did you need any electronic or anything like that, or?
No, I do not, thank you.
Go ahead, Russ.
So there are two projects that Logan City received RAPS funding from Cache County on. And on these, these two particular projects, the city is requesting additional time to complete them. The two projects are the Logan Middle Canal Trail, that this is located at 800 East and 1400 North. That's the project's scope. The project's site is the crossing over of the open stormwater channel that's located near the USU softball field at about 1250 North. This is the last component of this project. Other parts of the project which have been completed include a pedestrian hawk signal that was installed last year with help from UDOT on 8th East, and a pedestrian, a flashing beacon installed on 1400 North by Logan City to provide safe access for trail users going in both directions along that stormwater channel. The last part of this project, which we're requesting additional time for, involves the construction of a concrete cast-in-place culvert to allow people on the sidewalk, this would be on the east side of 800E, so it's the side that the university is on. And the university is in the, is in the process of finishing their pedestrian sidewalk plans. If you've noticed, in front of the stadium, there is a sidewalk there. That sidewalk will continue north to 1400 North, and it'll cross over onto this cast-in-place concrete culvert that this project is a part of. And we've had some difficulty in trying to get our timing lined up. Originally, we were going to put a, a trail bridge across it, similar to other trail bridges that we have in our trail system. The price of steel at the time, which was about a year and a half ago, just didn't make it feasible for us to go in that direction. The trade-off, though, was in changing the design from a trail bridge to a concrete culvert, we lost time in terms of having to re-engineer for a concrete culvert. We think this is still the right approach to go in terms of overall cost, but it's, it's taking us additional time to do that. One thing I wanted to point out with this particular project is, is the city has been before the county council for an extension. So this represent, me being here today represents a second request for that project. The second one involves the west part of Logan. It's the Logan 1800 South Spring Creek Trail. That project is in the area of about 1300 West, and it's in proximity to the Logan River Trail. This is an extension of that going north and south, and so it would serve the subdivisions that are near or at Logan River Estates, the Spring subdivision, Meadow Brook, and some of the other newer subdivisions that have been created in the last year or so. On that particular project, we have not been successful in attracting contractors. From what we were hearing after we had asked was that there wasn't enough time, and therefore not enough interest in bidding on the project. And so what we're hoping to do is add more time to make that project a little more, perhaps, attractive to bidders by giving them a little bit more time in there. But again, this is a project that was granted additional time from this council for that project. So on both projects, this is a second, a second request for time to complete the projects. With that, I will take any questions that you might have regarding this request.
Well, the delay on the culvert changes and all that, was, is that been for lack of ability to get permission from the canal company itself, or just, what caused that delay?
The cause of the delay was the cost of the steel for the trail bridge. Originally, that's what we were planning to do. And as we got, or the engineers got cost back on the fabrication of that, we just, that was not financially feasible, and so.
You're talking like a box culvert style?
Box culvert, over that stormwater channel.
Prefab-made, easy to install?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I know canal companies like those.
Well, they want us to coordinate with them, and that becomes part of the scheduling thing, too, because it's preferred that we get into this after their irrigation season, which would put it at September. So it does push it later in the year.
I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions at all?
No.
I'd entertain a motion, or we go, either go ahead with this or deny it, whatever.
I move to approve the RAPS funding extension for these two projects as described by Russ Akina for Logan City.
I'll second it.
Moving second that we approve these, extension for these two projects that were, that for Logan City funded by the RAPS program. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, again. 6B.
So Jason wasn't able to be here tonight, and I was the person who encouraged him to get on the agenda, so I thought I would speak to the poor little portion that I know. So the airport was awarded an economic development grant for a financial feasibility study this year, and we didn't know that it was awarded until after we did our 2023 budget opening. And so this grant was for $17,010. But they've signed the contract with this company to perform the study, and the work has started in 2023. And so I guess we were just going to request your blessing, where it's 100% covered grant, where we have the offsetting revenues, if the council would be okay if we overspent the expense line items to pay the 50% down payment for the feasibility study in 2023. And then because it's reimbursable by Sean's economic development grant, if we could use those revenues to offset the extra expense, if you guys would allow that, or be okay with that.
Well, I had a, Mr. Zup probably had the same thing, a long, a long-term discussion with the people doing the study, and they were pretty thorough. So I think it's going to be beneficial to our county to have, have some concrete plans in place for the future of the airport. So I would certainly suggest we approve the, the funding as described here.
Okay, you say it's out of the 2023 budget, that 50% is?
Yeah, we're there, we're there beginning the work in 2023.
Can we do that without a budget opening?
I don't, well, so what would we do is, we would overspend the budget, but then we'd have those matching revenues come in, so we would have $8,500 in revenue to match the 85 over expenditure.
And exactly when was that to come in?
The revenues?
Yeah.
It's reimbursement-based, so I'm assuming we would have to make the expense and then turn, submit the.
And then send it invoice, send it invoice to our economic development?
I know more details on how the reimbursement works.
So it's quite a quick turnaround, okay?
You're, you're actually going to get the county, the rural county grant money? You'll actually get that, that's used as the county's matching portion of an EDC Utah grant that I was, we've gotten. So the EDC Utah grant is reimbursable. That would actually be taken care of by your second, like wrap-it-up kind of payment. The, the first part, Sean Mill and Bear River Association of Governments Economic Development, you're going to get it anyway from the annual allotment of the rural county grant, so you'll actually have that money in hand.
Okay. Will you follow through on that, Brittany, make sure that all are, okay, everything's taken care of? Thanks, Sean. Okay. Did we, was that a form of motion? Did we get a second?
Was that a motion?
Was that a motion?
Yeah, it can be.
Can it be?
I didn't know if he needed a motion or a head nod.
I say we've all voted on it.
I'll make it a motion.
I'll second it.
Moving second that we go ahead with that approval of the funding for the financial feasibility study for the airport. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on with that. Again, 10, or 6C has been amended and stricken from the agenda tonight. Pending action, let's go on with 9A. That there is update of the fund balance limits that we've, everyone remember that? Where we're going to do the 10%, I believe it was?
Yep.
Yeah, the only thing that changed about this amendment was just the whereas is, I updated. Be the statutory maximum in state code is, for this year, well, I shouldn't say for next year, it's about 34 million.
We had that, we had that discussion, looked into that, and?
And this, this would change county code to match that, so that would be art with county code.
Taylor, head nod? Yep, that's all we need. Good for you.
Question, Mr. Chair?
You bet.
Do we need to have what the 2023 amount is on there? I mean, I know it's just as a reference, but.
So it's not in code?
Just the whereas is?
It's just in the whereas, it's, it's not, this is what's in code, this is the redline version right here. You can see what the maximum, what it states the maximum, this is, maximum accumulated unappropriated surplus in the county general fund should not exceed the limit set forth in the Uniform Fiscal Procedures Act for Counties. So that, that maximum set forth in the Uniform Fiscal Procedures Act for Counties, for Cache County, at the time is 34 million.
Okay.
Another benefit of changing this is that as that gets changed at the state level, and as they amend that, we won't constantly amend our code.
There you go.
We can just refer to state code.
Okay.
Other questions? You entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance 2023-43 as presented.
I'll second.
It is pending action, and so we've talked about it last week, so sounds good. Is there any discussion on that? Been moving seconded, we approve that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Let's go to resolution 2023-25. And this one here, we had a, we'll get this fixed tonight.
Yeah, so this is.
And I would urge everyone to vote.
This is the, the resolution that, that prelim, sets preliminary salary starting in 2025 for our county clerk and our county auditor. Last week, there was a motion to amend this ordinance. I think we, the council voted, and we kind of moved forward as if that passed. It actually failed. There was only three votes in the affirmative, so this is still as it was last week with nothing. So we, before this is passed, you, you guys will need to put some dollar amount in there.
And basically, an abstaining is a no vote?
That's the effect. So the, the county code requires four votes in the affirmative for any official action.
Okay, what is your, it's your discussion, your items, council? What do you, what would you like to do?
Well, we vetted this pretty thoroughly last week, and after looking at it further and thinking about it, I feel like the suggestion made to put the, the salary amounts in there at the 112,000, some odd change, it's the salary, current salary for the county clerk auditor, put those numbers in there, and approve this resolution to set these initial salaries for county clerk and county auditor beginning January of 2025.
So first, we have to probably have an amendment to add that. Could we have that in the form of, of an amendment, to add that 112,000?
I can't remember exactly what the amounts were.
I've, I've got to find them really quick. I will find, check those down as quick as I can.
12 something, I can't remember all the details.
Yeah, 112,000 something.
I think I have it written down.
And this will not be a part of the 2024 budget at all. It will.
Yeah, here it is. I think I have it, 112, 157, 54.
That's right.
Okay, is there a second on that amendment to this?
I'll second it.
Moving second that we amend this resolution to insert the amounts of 112?
157. 157.
Or 50, 157.54 for both county clerk and county auditor to be the same. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we have that. Motion does pass. Will, did you vote? Okay, just kind of quiet today. Okay, we'll go with, that passes then, resolution 2023-26.
Was that motion just for amendment?
Oh, that was amendment, I'm sorry. Now, yeah, now we'll, excuse me, I got to back up, I'm trying to run through this faster than we can, so let's go back and it, as amended now, it is inserted at 112, 157, and .54. So now for discussion on the resolution as such, or, or for a motion to pass or deny, whatever you want to do.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary salaries for the county clerk and county auditor beginning January 6, 2025, at.
As amended.
As amended. At 112, 157.54.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moving seconded that we pass resolution 2023-25 as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes, 66 to 1. Let's go with resolution 2023-26, on the agreement with Lincoln Hill Partners.
Okay, this has not changed from last week. This is a resolution that would terminate a consulting agreement that the council entered into May 1, 2022, with Lincoln Hill Partners to provide lobbying services for the county.
Is there any discussion?
I just had one additional question to this, and that is maybe just for amongst us to decide, but is there any outstanding work that we have had that took place under this contract that is not yet completed, or things that were in the works that would stop, or we need to at least have a handoff? I'm more concerned about the handoff than anything, make sure we don't lose any ground that we may have been gaining and we've already paid for. I, I mentioned it last time, I'm not aware of anything, so I can't answer that question myself, but that's, I'm more concerned about the handoff, just, you know, use his name, if Kerry's got something he's working on, and then end this, and it just falls, it's about the money we spent already.
The biggest thing they've been working on between legislative sessions is the money for the Western Corridor that they've been working with Congressman Moore's office on. So that is one that has been in progress, and we would want to make sure we get briefed on what the status is, latest, next steps, all those things. That has been moving along well, I think they were successful in securing us a couple million dollars to help with that, it's not totally finalized yet, but we can make sure we, we get caught up on the status of that one, and what needs to happen next.
I know our, our current, our local legislators are very much abreast of that, and are working feverishly on that, so.
Thank you.
Other comment, other discussions? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution 2023-26, resolution terminating the May 2022, May 1, 2022 consulting agreement with Lincoln Hill Partners.
I'll second it.
Moving seconded that we approve resolution 2023-26, since the resolution terminating the consulting agreement with Lincoln Hill Partners. It's now open for discussion on that. Any discussion?
I just want to say that I have confidence in Mica and his association with our legislators that I think, at least for a year, you know, give it a try and see, see what happens, but I think we'll be okay with everything. And I have talked to some of our legislators also, and I think we're going to be fine.
Can I make kind of a request? If this passes, if it doesn't pass, if you, the council thinks it would be appropriate, I thought it might be good for me to send an email to some of our legislators here in the county. Most of them know me, to some extent or another, but to kind of introduce myself and to let them know that I'll be working with them on behalf of the county, anything that they need, particularly with the council, and that, and as we have these issues with the upcoming legislative session, and I can send that email to all of you first and let you all see it.
I think that's excellent idea.
By all means.
I want to first, also want to compliment our, the consultant agreement that we did have, I want to compliment them for the work that they did do. It has actually been kind of enjoyable to work with them, and I think they have, they have represented us well. I hope that maybe on some special projects, or something that we might have down the road, where there may, if there is a lobbyist need, that they would be very open for that. If we would like to hire them for maybe a special project or something, and, and I'm hoping that they would still work with us. I know they're, they're good people, and they would, I'm hoping that they would be very open, that we keep that door open for them to maybe work with them in the future on some special project if needed.
Karen tried calling me a couple times today, but I couldn't take the call, but he sent a text, and he says whatever he decides, he'll agree with it. He was very gentlemanly about it, and says if we need him in the future, he's ready to help us, so.
help us, so. Kudos to them for that way of doing it, but I agree with Barbara. I think Mica can, with his experience, especially Representative Sandals and stuff, that he can help us on that, so I think we go this course and see how we work out.
Any other discussion? Proceed the vote then? I did get a motion, didn't I? Yeah. Okay. We're going through... We will proceed to vote. All those in favor of passing Resolution 2023-26, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. If you notice in the pending action, we do have that, the Resolution 2023-18, adopting the 2024 budget. Is there any of these others? Did you want to move that down a little bit and get some of these others taken care of, or do you want to hit that one right now?
I think we should maybe move it down and look at these, get these others taken care of.
Might be a little more discussion on it. What do you think?
Mine's me.
Is that okay that we do that?
Yep.
Okay. Let's go ahead and just postpone that one for right now. Let's go down to 10A, Resolution 2023-28. Created a countywide policy manual for Cache County. Mike, are you going to take that one, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. This is a policy that has been through ordinance and policy review committee. It establishes a policy manual for Cache County. This won't replace the personnel... Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual. That manual is related to personnel policies. It's administered by our Office of Personnel Management. That's not going anywhere. What this manual will be for will be the practices of the county. The policies and practices of the county. Sorry, a lot of P's today. And this is... This will be a place where resolutions... I don't think every resolution that the council passes will go into this manual, but to get something in this manual, it will need to be passed as... By a resolution with the council. And it will... It'll be a countywide policy manual, and every employee will have access to it.
Michael, will that be something that you begin to put together? Will Amy's office do that? How will that actually happen?
Yeah, it will live within the council. I will maintain it. I will make sure that we have a way. I think it will probably become available the same way the PPP manual is available to every county, every employee through the Intranet. And I imagine it will be placed there, so... But yeah, it will primarily be me kind of maintaining it under your direction.
So, Michael, when, let's say, okay, we pass an ordinance, you'll make sure that that gets into the new... This new manual. Okay.
Yeah. And there will be through... This is... I think we'll be working on this throughout 2024, and I think we'll be moving some things out of the Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual that we have today, moving it into this manual, the countywide. This will be the countywide policy manual. And just, it'll kind of be a judgment call over whether a specific policy is more of a personnel policy dealing with personnel, something that the Office of Personnel Management should be administering, or if it's more of a... Just a countywide policy.
Most of all, these policies, they'll actually... They'll have their birth, their infancy birth, probably in the ordinance and policy...
Correct.
The Cache County Council's Ordinance and Policy Committee, right?
Correct.
Probably come through there for... To be vetted and detailed and before it's even probably brought to the council as a whole.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the main thing that inspired this was just that there have been resolutions that the council has passed, policies that the council has created that maybe didn't go into county code. They weren't appropriate for county code, but they were still countywide policies, but they didn't go into the Personnel and Procedures Manual either. So they were published with that meeting that they passed with, and then that was sort of it. And that makes it really difficult to kind of disseminate these policies to our employees.
Excellent. Any questions on that?
I think it's a fabulous idea.
I'll leave your... It is initial proposal, but it is at the end of the year. Unless you'd like to come back, maybe in a couple of weeks?
I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance... A resolution 2023-45.
Twenty-eight.
Forty-five.
Twenty-eight.
It's actually 2023-28. It's a new number.
Oh, sorry. I didn't get that written down.
Excellent.
I'll second it.
Moving seconded that we suspend the rules and pass Resolution 2023-28, or a resolution creating a countywide policy manual for Cache County. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those... Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Let's go down while we're right there in the initial, the resolution enacting a countywide policy for interim acting pay. You got this one, Amy? Excellent.
This policy has also been through ordinance and policy review committee, and we've actually vetted this for a few months now, making sure that we have it where we need it to be and where things are correct. And so I hope you've had a chance to read through that. I do have an email from Terrell Warner. She was hoping that she'd be able to be here tonight because something like this has happened to her in the past, and she wanted me to share an email with you, if that's okay. Dear County Council, I appreciate Amy Adams sharing my thoughts with you about this important resolution. Four years ago, my professional responsibilities increased overnight. I was a year into my doctoral program when I was tasked to oversee the Children's Justice Center, along with my regular responsibilities with victim services. I had two kids still at home, an ecclesiastical responsibility that required significant time and a demanding job. I am grateful that Amy Adams and former county attorney James Swink, who worked with the council in finance to ensure additional compensation, was provided for the additional work that was added to my list of responsibilities. When employees leave Cache County, there are times when a significant amount of time may pass before the employee is replaced, but the employee's work needs to be done in a timely manner. This resolution solidifies that when this happens, the employee covering heavy workloads is compensated. I strongly urge the county to pass Resolution 2023-23 and make it retroactive to September 1, 2023. This ensures that all those who have additional work responsibilities added to the current responsibilities are compensated equally and fairly. Thank you for all you do for our community, Terrell Warner. With this, she's recommending September 1. I believe that we have changed that to be October 1. Is that correct, Mica?
Yeah.
To be... We're recommending that it be retroactive to October 1, and I am happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions?
Do we know how... If it's retroactive, do we know how many will be impacted by this, or?
At this point, there will probably be one or two.
And so I have a question that how is that interim pay or the... How is that determined? Like the amount?
And so it's right here in the policy. It says in number one, "An employee's pay while on interim acting pay will be increased to the minimum pay range for the position the employee will be interim acting. The employee's current job code and pay range shall not change during an interim acting pay assignment. The interim acting pay will be listed separately on the pay stub." Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
As I read this and as I... And you look at the budgets, there's already when someone... The only time that I guess someone... We may not have the full amount or monies in there would be the stipend, or you know, those... What do they call that, when they get paid out for so much?
Yeah, so when an employee leaves employment with the county, if they have any personal leave time that has been accrued, that would be paid out to them in their final check. And sometimes that can be significant amounts where we allow them to accrue up to 520 hours. And so if they had close to that 520 hours, then that could possibly put a swing in the budget that way to allow for them the interim acting pay. So then we would need to have the council approve to have that amounts moved into the budget.
And that could be the shift on instances like that.
Right.
So... That's where we probably have to do, you know, the budget opening, make some changes. More than likely, the interim or that pay is actually budgeted for initially.
Yeah.
It's just how it has to be used depending upon who left, when they left, and so forth, so.
Other thing to consider, yeah, exactly. When someone does leave for us to fill that position, even if someone does give a two-week notice, it generally takes about eight weeks before we're able to get someone into that position. By the time we do the posting of the job, the interviews, that person gives notice to their employer and is able to make the transition. And that's if everything goes exactly the right way. Sometimes it could be longer, so... Especially in significant type positions, as we're searching for the person with the right qualifications, that could take longer, so... But the county business still needs to continue. It can't just stop.
Other questions, discussion?
So in number two, it's talking about the department head or elected official, so is that the only one that can recommend it, or is that just the desired?
It also, if it continues there, it says if the director of Personnel Management... Let's see. I'm trying to... Yes, but that's not what I was looking for. Up above in the first paragraph, about midway through, it says if an elected official or department head fails to initiate interim acting pay when required, the director of Personnel Management will initiate such pay after conducting a review to determine that the employee is performing significant duties for a vacant position with higher pay range than their own.
So therefore, an employee can come to you and say, "Look, I've done this. Somebody above me is not recommending it or watching it, so that's what I want to watch out for."
Yes, and then I would do that evaluation to make sure that what they're telling me is the truth and that those duties that they are performing are significant and that they would be duties that would be performed in different job descriptions that are a different job description than them with higher pay.
I like that part. Thank you.
I do, too.
Other discussion, questions? I'd entertain a motion or however you'd like to. It is initial.
So we need to suspend?
Yep, you would have to suspend the rules.
I move that we suspend the rules and approve Resolution 2023-23, a resolution enacting a countywide policy for interim acting pay.
I'll second.
Moving seconded that we suspend the rules and pass Resolution 2023-23 on the resolution enacting a countywide policy for interim acting pay. Mica? This is for that book that you're talking about. Okay? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Can I just thank Amy for working on this?
Yes.
Yeah, Amy, thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 2023-27, approving a payment of premium pay according to county attorney's policy. And this is coming to us, I believe, because of all pay above their base pay must be approved by the Cache County Council.
That's correct. And in this... This is a special case. This would be an exception from that rule because the prosecutors who are doing these special victims cases, they're dealing with the most heinous crimes that happen in our community. They're dealing with child pornographers, sexual assaults, murders, the worst things that happen in life and in the world in our community. And we understand, we recognize that that's a difficult position to put someone in, and it takes a special kind of person to do that, even for a short period of time. And we want to incentivize people to be able to be in that position. And as you can see, in the past year, we've had people rotate in and out of that. It's not meant to be a permanent stipend forever. We want people to rotate in and out. It's not good for our employees to be in there for an extended period of time, but we want to be able to provide a little bit of incentive to put them in contact with that sort of situation and make it a little bit easier for them. So for that reason, we were asking for this approval for the premium pay for our special victims prosecutors for the times that they are acting in as a special victims prosecutor. And if you look closely, we have our unit chief, Ronnie Keller, Josh Nemeth, both of whom have been doing it the entire year. Andrew Crane rotated out in June 2023, so June of this year, and Griffin Hazard started covering for it in November. So we're actively rotating people out. It's not a permanent thing for any particular employee, but it does help them deal with these difficult cases.
So would this be paid... If this is passed, would this be paid before the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay. And we don't need a budget opening or anything?
It's already in the budget.
Already in there. Okay, thank you.
It's just a matter of because it is above... How I understand it is because it's above their base salary.
Okay.
We are like we've done that ordinance a while ago. We have to approve those.
Okay, awesome.
Any other questions, concerns, motions, whatever you'd like to do?
I'll go ahead and suspend the rules and move that we pass Resolution 2023-27, approving payment of premium pay according to the county attorney's policy.
Second.
Moving seconded, we go ahead and suspend the rules and pass Resolution 2023-27. All in favor, say aye.
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 What's that?
Do you want to?
It's on the back page.
Flip it over. There you go. Any other questions? Again, I'll call for the vote again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So, okay, let's go back to the budget. Adopting the 2024 Cache County budget. We do have, I think, some additions, deletions from what we talked about, even a couple additions on promises that have been made. So let's open that one. And Brittany, thanks for coming back. We really grilled you last time. I got... I pretty well got answers to most of the questions that I had, except for one, and I haven't had time to go back. And there is one thing I would like to bring up. We did have a meeting, a county council meeting earlier with the Cache Water District. And remember, Nathan Dawes brought up that wanting some participation and help that we told them that we would in that study that they're doing on the Bear River. And I don't... I didn't see that in here at all. I think we probably ought to... We didn't have a specific amount. Remember, he looked at us and said, "Whatever you'll give, whatever you'll help us out with is great." He told me that the study would be in the neighborhood of 20-something thousand. They are getting some donations, but when I kind of pinned him down to it, he would be... They would be elated if we could help them at 10,000 on that study. Any... I would propose, or if anyone else would like to propose the 10,000 to go to that, and I can't remember the count that it would come out of. It'd be similar to where those... Did you find that, Mica? Like, for example, that, that we have the agriculture money to pay the two conservation districts? I can't remember where that is, to be honest with you. Because I've seen that in the detail, but I was hoping to put $10,000 into that. And then could we find the right budget for that to go into later, I guess? I wish I could, I knew right off... Oh, here it is. Hang on, boy, just... Boy. Ding ding. It just... It is on page 17. We do have it detailed out there, and it is under, boy, that famous thing called miscellaneous in general.
My favorite.
Yes. Under Supplies and Services here, we have, for example, the bee inspection, soil conservation, donation of $6,000. Somewhere in there, would an account have to be created, or?
So can we reference that to a page on the...
On the digital version? Yeah.
Oh.
What page would it be on there?
It's page 19.
19 on there? Okay. Thank you. I'm looking at paper.
Seventy-six at the bottom of page 19.
1776 at the bottom of page 19.
19. Okay.
So that's.
Yeah, I see.
I think it's.
Would we, would we create another account there for specifically for that, like the soil conservation, bee inspection, something like that? That's probably where it would come out of because it would be a flow-through.
Yeah. So that would be, the account you're referencing there on page 17 is the, the Cache County Community Foundation.
What?
Okay. Good. Yeah. Page 3176.
Okay.
That might be a better place. Page 33 of the iPads.
Okay.
So this, this is under miscellaneous.
33 of 76.
31 of 76. But that's where we pay for the soil conservation, bee inspection.
Yeah. And it just doesn't have, there's not a specific number made there. I guess one could probably be created, Brittany, or is that how you would do that?
We can. Yep.
What is your feeling on that? I don't want to, I think it's very valuable. Water, I think, has one of the highest priorities that we are fighting right now.
They're already talking about it. And so I, yeah, we need to put that in.
If our contribution helps get the ball rolling, I feel like.
Totally agree with that.
Other people might contribute if they see that it's a little more serious with, with us already participating.
Do you want to handle these little amendments individually? Or do you want to put them in, then we pass everything together? What would be your preference?
Oh, you're talking to the council?
I have a council.
I think we ought to do them one at a time, just in case, in case there, that just doesn't muddy the water.
Then I would entertain a motion for that amendment to be put in.
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded, we add the $10,000 to go to the, the Cache Water District for this, for the purpose for the study.
And would you want it to be its own budget line item?
Probably, yeah.
I think I would like it.
If, if, you know, if that's what's needed for the counting purposes, that'd be great.
Do I need to add that to the motion? But that's the intent.
It will. That would be a mechanism that you could handle.
Yep. I just want to make sure.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, that one's taken care of. I believe that, I think I got answers on most everything else. There was the, I had talked about, we just started it, but we withdrew the motion last time on, on temporarily deleting the amount in the budget for the, to hire the county surveyor of 173,000. And I think that comes up into public works engineer, engineering allocation. Is that right?
Um, it should be in the municipal services budget under engineering in the full-time employees. So if we took that position out, we would also need to amend the allocation into the general fund because it would change the 50% amount.
You could put that in one motion.
Could we?
Yeah, that might be one motion.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
Let me talk to this man this week on that.
So we'll still do surveying through contract?
Through contract.
For the time being.
For the time being.
I think that, and then we, we let things evolve as we go. So, okay?
Okay.
Uh, I'll, I'll take that in the form of amendment.
So moved. I can't remember all the words to it.
That we delete the 173,000 allocated for the survey, surveyor for the 2024 budget? Okay?
And wherever else that trickles into the budget.
And the continuance, what you need to do with that?
Yeah, it's the, it's affecting the allocation of the general fund as well.
I'll second.
Is moving seconded that we amend the, the budget and delete the $173,000 appropriation for this, the surveyor position, for county surveyor. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes on that one. Actually, I, you know, I had concerns about putting training pay in auditor's budget. I, I reached out and, and I was, I was told by them that there was money in there for training. Now it's, it, it may not be specific for certain kinds of training, but it was enough for the training to hopefully to, I don't know, I, I was a little iffy on it, but they said that there was enough money in that training, there was still money in that training budget. And that, but it was not for all types of training. There would be money in for the financial program training. And I, it was even offered to, to bring Casell up, they would actually come up here for free and even do a training with all of us for free. It might be adequate for what we would want, but if it isn't adequate for what other employees need, then we, then I say we, maybe in a future budget opening, make sure that we get that allotted in there. So that was the feedback that I got. Has anyone gotten other feedback or changes?
No.
No.
Can I ask a question? How long are we keeping Casell? Was there talk of finance changing a software package?
I think they're still looking into that Oracle program. They're still looking into that, right?
Yep. We've got a Zoom meeting with them on Friday.
Yeah.
If that happened, would it be, how quickly? Like, is that going to be a long process or would it happen fairly quickly?
I think, I'm remembering, I think they said six to nine months.
Okay.
Transition.
So we need to make Casell work.
Yeah. At least for the next year.
In fact, we still have.
Yep.
Yeah. I think that's in the future. So, any other?
So that doesn't need a motion, correct? That just says what's here is, is sufficient? Is that what you were saying?
Yeah. In other words, I don't have anything personally that I want changed in that yet.
Okay.
Unless you.
I would like to make sure that the finance gets the training they need on Casell. So that's a statement from me as a council member. There's definite adequate money for training in there for that.
Maggie, would you come up and answer some questions for us? Kind of our clerk auditor is not here, but could you answer? Uh, we'll find out, ask you what, you're, you're the, you're the financial division guru here.
Yeah.
So what specific, what more training that would, that would be necessary to help you and everyone else in the finance division decides what money has been allotted to it? Is there additional that you need?
So my understanding was we had, um, our training was taken from 10.5 to 45 for 100 for next year. And so my understanding is that that, the intent with that is that there would be no travel-related training. And so any training that our staff is going to do, we need to find online. That is the direction I think given.
How about the possibility, is that?
So I've looked at some trainings.
Is that, let me ask this, is it adequate training to do that online?
I, it depends on what you're trying to accomplish. So there are a number of different trainings depending on the staff and their education level. There's also a program that is for a certified public finance officer program, which is kind of like the CPA exam, but specific to governmental accounting, which I've looked at. So there's a number of different trainings that I've looked at. Most of them are not available online. The certified public financial officer is something that you can get all the materials to, and that is, can be done away from any of these travel sites. But there are other more specific trainings that would require travel for myself or someone else who needs to be brought up to speed.
So in order for that to happen, we would need to increase that budget to accommodate any travel?
That's, that's my understanding. There is one I looked at specifically that's in January. That is an accounting-intensive program for people who are new to the private sector. So it relies on a public sector-based training and then kind of brings you in four days. It goes through everything, accounting, governmental accounting related. That one is in DC. So that one would, the budget would have to increase for me to be able to go to that.
What about the Casell training? Do you feel like just looking at that online and?
So when I spoke to the woman from Casell, that they don't charge, they'll do two days and they'll come up here and do a training for anybody who needs it, anybody who wants it. They just ask that we cover their travel expenses. So they don't charge, they do have an online option, but they charge $175 an hour for the online option. So coming here, they can, they'll do it for free. They just ask for the night in the hotel and they're pretty good to be covered.
So it would, what's in the budget, has it's been amended? Would that, would that cover that stay or?
I think that stay would be relatively inexpensive. It would be one or two nights in a hotel. So for the Casell training, I think that is reasonable.
I just want to say that I think the finances of our county are the most important part of what we do, you know, keeping people safe and all that stuff. But we have to pay for things and take care of people's tax dollars. And I say we need to make sure that our financial department head is trained completely in everything that she needs in order to do that job. And I don't know how to quantify that specifically, but I would hate to say that we're not getting the financial training that we need because of a budget item. And I don't know how everyone else feels about that, but I would be happy to increase that budget. I just don't know exactly how much or.
You know, I, I think we need to, and since we can't quantify it right now, this is why we'll have budget openings when it comes up to us and we can.
Yes.
Look at it and.
So those things you still need.
The training that you need.
But as it stands now, Maggie, would, did you say that where the cuts are, it would not pay for that training you need in Washington DC as it is now?
Correct. It would, it wouldn't be enough to cover. I believe the fees, I believe the entry fee for that training was around 2,000 and then a hotel and flight. So I think it would eat up basically the entire education and training budget. I think if we could keep it the same as it was this year, you know, we had a couple people at a higher level. And so if it was sufficient to keep them trained, maybe not cutting it would be fantastic and helpful, but.
I'm intrigued about that training, but also the certified, did you call it CPIW?
Yes. It's a certified public finance officer, CPFO.
So talk about that.
So that one, from what research I found, you pay, it's part of the GFO, GFOA, GFAL. And you pay for these, the classes, the books, the trainings. They send it all to you. It includes, there's seven pieces that you're tested on before you're certified. And so it includes 10 attempts at those seven pieces of the testing and then all of the training materials. It's a two-year process to get the certification, the way they lay it out.
And you work on it on your own pace?
Correct.
And as you study, you go back to a kind of an intense, one-day catch-up and then you have to travel for the test as well, right?
Um, I believe the test, I believe that entire program is online, but I'd have to, I'd have to look into it a little bit further for some of those details. But I, I think that one can all be done without travel.
And how soon would, do you see yourself needing to get started on that?
Um, I'd have, I'd have to look into it a little bit further. I'm happy to start. Any training I can get, I'm happy to take as quickly as I can get it. Year-end and financial preparation is coming up. So anything I can get, I'd be happy to take.
And the Washington trip is in January though. It's coming right up.
Comments, questions?
Well, we could move, I mean, it was 10.5 before. We could move it back to 10.5 from nine. That's in there now.
I believe it's just 4,500 that's in there right now.
They, it was lowered to 4,500 or 40.
So even the nine would be helpful.
Educational training. Oh, we did. Okay. Whoops. Yeah. And maybe it's appropriate, probably to put it back to nine.
You need more, we can do a budget opening on the.
So I would make a motion that we amend the budget by increasing the education and training for finance to back to 9,000.
I'll second that.
Moving seconded, we amend the, the budget for training in the auditor's department back to 9,000.
That's specifically in the finance line. There's a separate auditor section.
Finance line.
Is there any discussion on that?
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I. Any other? Okay. Let's go back to some other. That's about cleared up some questions that I specifically had. Go into my written copy here. There was, I still had one other question. Was the. Okay, our donation to Cache Chamber of Commerce is set at 10,000, right? Okay, so that one's solid?
Yep.
Okay. Numbers jumped around on that one a little bit, 10,000. And.
Do we need to pass a motion for that specific?
Okay. Trying to find the. Okay, other questions you might have?
I had a question on this one here on, on my paper copy. It's seven, page 17. But I had circled it for miscellaneous expense of 29,500.
Under which account?
Supplies and services.
For which department?
The general fund, sorry.
Back, yeah, back there, it's in the same, the same account where the, the soil conservation, bee inspection. And those, those were, was that page 30, 30-something that you guys were looking at?
That was, I think it was 33.
33. Okay.
That was the one that went from 179,000 in 2020, 179,199 in 2022, dropped down to 29.5. And then again, in, in 2024, the tentative was 29.5. And I had a question marked by that one too, but I don't remember us ever getting an answer on that one.
Yeah.
Any idea? Answers that we can have on that one?
I, I think I'm familiar with that account. I pulled it up right now.
Is that a combination of like three or four different themes?
Yes.
Okay.
If it's, if I'm right about which one it is.
It's hard to remember everything, isn't it?
I can't remember.
This is. This is a lot of small kind of countywide expenses. Right. This is the account that pays for indigent.
Oh, okay.
Indigent individuals.
Oh, yeah, we talked about.
Yeah, we brought that up.
Oh, good.
There's.
And a lot of that in 2022 was grant money, I think, that we received.
That's why it was so high?
That's why it's so much higher.
In the past, this has been the account where parade. In the past, this has been the account where parade candy has been purchased out of. And I think some parade candy for this year was, when, when I've been purchasing parade candy, I, I've been taking it out of the executive, not the executive, the council's budget.
I think this is also where historically we've had the employee Christmas bonus paid out too.
That came out of this account too?
The employee Christmas bonus.
Because I think this year was the first year it hit the payroll budgets in each department. I think historically it used to come from business ladies account.
There's some pretty good, is there any way that, these are some kind of some main, major items. Is there any way that we could maybe separate those out? The, the big ones, the big ticket ones or?
Yeah, so the biggest expenses in this account for 2023, so this is where the, I, I, the, the indigent expenses for, for deceased individuals in the county. It looks like for this year. I see two, I, I don't, I don't know if that's correct. I see, it looks like there's about two expense. So I think if we put 2,500 in that account, like created a new line just for that. And then there is the, the text my gov service. That's the other big expense from this account. That's a service that, that my understanding is it, it is a way that the county can communicate with, with voters who signed up for it and I, I'm not sure on all the details.
I talked a little with Janine on that and that, that's exactly what you said.
Yeah.
Can you see the, kind of the problems with this? We got, we got like three or four different departments all kind of going several different directions. Brittany, I'm not so much about lowering that amount, but I guess we would just like it separated into some specific areas where it really should be accrued.
Okay.
Maybe, I don't know. What's, what's your feeling?
I agree with that. I did, I needed a clarification though. In 23, the employee bonuses were paid out of that account. Is that correct?
No, in 23, it was budgeted in the department's wages and benefits lines.
Okay.
But I think that's why it was reduced between 22 and 23.
Gotcha.
I think the biggest expense that was cut out of that was the, from 22 to 23.
I, I would say the, the, the two easiest things, the majority of this account, I don't know about majority may not be the right word, but you would simplify it a great deal by creating two, two more additional budget lines. One for, I need to make sure I get the phrase correct, but indigent.
Indigent expenses.
Indigent expenses and putting 2,500 in there. And then the other budget line that would go to that text my gov and you could just say, I, I don't know, I think the executive office actually kind of runs that, but communications or public communications budget line. And it looks like that was $5,000 for this year for that. And you could just move those into those two things and you would, right there, you would take about, that would be 75.
Is that the cost of that program?
Uh, yeah. So that would be 7, if you did, if you created those two additional budget lines and moved those items out of this budget line, you would cut the miscellaneous expense by a third.
And so what would the rest of it be used for?
So it's, there's a lot of items there.
Okay.
So you've got. Parade candy.
Should we give Brittany a charge to look at this more detail and see if, that some of these things would actually fit into other, into other accounts or other places better?
Yeah.
Because it just seems like this is kind of one of those, oh, let's just pull it out of there. Oh, let's just pull it out of there.
I say something, Mr. Chair. I specifically remember some meetings between Phil and I at the end of 2022 where generally speaking, these were actually their own departments at one time, many of these. And that was just a real pain for finance to have to track an entire department for, let's say, the B inspection. B inspection was its actual own department. So I would, I'm not saying not to have her do that, but I think what might help us to understand this budget line better is during the budget process next year, to actually have a budget workshop just on this department. Because I think we're used to having like certain departments come and give what their needs are. But having finance come and, and we can help if we have any insight and any other departments come and say, this is why this is in this department. The idea that Phil shared with me was that a lot of these issues didn't fit in any specific department well. So that's, that's the background onto what, how this one came to be. So just, I'd offer that.
In the budget line, it just says miscellaneous expenses. So I'm not even 100% sure.
Right, so the budget line can be more, right, in, and you can, I, I, I like the idea of creating more specific budget lines within this department.
In that department, just so that we can understand.
I think that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because those big old, you get a big miscellaneous, you know, an account like that that just doesn't, you sit there and keep wondering. That's the pot that anyone can use arbitrarily. You sit there and go, why? So.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, please.
I am really confused over all of this. We're sitting here at the last few minutes of the year and now trying to go through each line and tearing it apart and trying to make sense of the line at this hour. And wouldn't, wouldn't it make more sense to pass the budget as it sits and then do budget openings to be able to clarify each of these lines and change things around as necessary rather than trying to do it as we sit here. You guys are probably smarter than me, but I'm, I'm getting really confused as to where we sit and what we're doing.
I think that our direction to Brittany to go into this budget here, I don't think, was there a change in that number at all? Anyone propose a change in that number?
No, we just, as far as I know, we just want to know exactly where.
What it?
And she, she could prevent, present that to us a little later.
Right. That, and that was the charge to give Brittany to go out and, you know, and look at those closer and give us a.
So you're asking her to do that now?
No, no.
So Carl, is that a motion? Pass the budget as is?
I would make that a motion.
I'll second it.
What, as amended?
As amended, yeah.
All, everything.
Yep.
Well, it's moving seconded that we passed the, the budget.
Wait a minute.
I know, no, hang on. It's been moving seconded that we passed the 2024 budget as amended with all the different amendments that we've already come up with. There are some items that we have not. We have put numbers down, but we have not voted individually on those. But that is moving seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion? Because I think there was a lot, we had a lot of discussion on things that now basically without specific amendments to change those, they would not occur. We're ground zero.
Yeah, I think there's some more points that we brought up last week that I'd like to discuss, so.
The same way with me.
That has been moved and seconded, but. Any discussion on that motion? Proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
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 So that's one, two, three is all? Everyone, you're aye, 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 aye?
Aye.
Oh, you guys are missing the vote. Okay, motion passes. Okay, I think you guys are, I think you're out.
We can do amendments going forward, but to try.
All that work that we were going through last week just got thrown out the door.
I feel like the consensus in my vote, if I can justify it, is we have a lot of work to do. But right now, I don't feel like is the time to be doing that work.
Sitting here at the dais trying to do this, it's just going in my head crazy. And so I think, I think we need to do, like we've talked about, have monthly budget openings and look at these things and.
Last week, we had all those, we had several suggestions on all those different accounts we're going through. There, we didn't vote on them. But they're not changed.
Well, I mean, I didn't hear you those brought forward in our discussions here.
We, we were, we haven't, we haven't finished it. That's why we're going through those. And these, all those changes, they were not made in the form of a motion. We just basically, we agreed to it to bring it together and then we were going to, then we were going to actually bring it all together later. And it wasn't, those changes were not brought, it was amendments. So none of those changes have occurred. And that's what, if that's what you guys are after, I think you're, I, to me, you're missing out. Nothing's going to change and we are right back to ground zero in, in what we wanted to make changes in is what you guys all shared with me.
Maybe I didn't realize that all of that stuff that we talked about hadn't been already put in here. I, I thought.
Have you made those changes? No, because they weren't, they weren't, we had not, we had not passed the amendments to do that.
Well, then maybe I'll rescind my motion that's possible to do.
It has been voted on. We'd have to rescind the whole, that whole motion in a form of a motion. I, I'll take that as a motion, but if not, we're done.
So is that, is there a motion out?
Well. Carl, you want to make that? That would take a second on that.
Well, I'll make that motion. I, I guess my, I'm just frustrated.
Well, we've.
That we're sitting here, the last meeting of our year and now going through and picking apart every line and trying to make decisions that, that I'm unsure about in, in all, in all of these items. And I, I just.
Okay, can I ask this?
Yeah.
We talked about a few changes on the executive's budget. We met with the executive, three of us, and there was some talk on that. I understand there were some others that met this afternoon. Was that correct? Are there things we need to talk about there? I would.
I think there are.
I would like to see some things there. I mean, I don't want to see anybody laid off, but I think there are just a couple of things I'd like to discuss, but that's where I'm headed.
And I knew what I was voting on because I don't want to repeat last week.
You don't want?
I don't want to repeat last week's meeting in another public meeting. So I know what I was voting on.
Yeah, I feel the same way.
And I'm happy to hit this head on. I think that we need, we need to save this county's finances. We need to talk about these things. This is the public's business. And to me, it doesn't bother me to talk about the public's business in front of the public. That's how I feel. It's that important to me that they know. They know how our county is run. So. So what, what is the pleasure of the council then?
I think a vote was had.
Carl wants to rescind that motion. I, I think there were some important things we did discuss last time that we can just, that we didn't put into a final vote. And so that I would, I think we could still have a discussion on that to finalize that.
Sandy, you and I had a discussion about some of those items. I think maybe we could sit down and get some more detail into that. And it did feel a little bit rushed, our, our discussion about that. We could get a more detailed version of that and bring it back in January for the first budget opening. Then it would be something that I think everybody would know exactly what it was.
I think we're closer, but I still think there's things that we talked about, like the, the, the main things that I'm looking at is we talked about the intern budget or the, like, I hate to pass a budget that still has.
That's where I'm looking at.
Yes, that we definitely decided we did not want. And so I had forgotten about that and I need, and that we didn't actually make those changes last week. And I don't know, I don't want to rehash every single line.
No, no, you're doing.
But there are a few things I think that we could, and we could still do that as a budget opening, but I would prefer to set some of that stuff going forward because that's what we decided that we wanted to do as a council. But I do think we can finalize, it's, it's not a lot of money comparatively and I'd be willing to keep discussing it tonight or we can move forward. I'm, I'm kind of either way.
No motions? I think we failed, so I'll be blunt about that.
Well, I don't think we failed because we still can, we still can amend the budget. We, uh, and hopefully we can do it in a way that is, is not making me so confused about each of these, each of these items. And we had, we had to pass a budget by the year end and but we can amend the budget moving forward. I mean, we could have a, a budget opening every single week in January and, and just hit them head on. And, and in a specific way, we, we could, each of us, put together the concerns and questions we have and do a budget opening on that specific item, talk about it and then amend the budget in the budget opening. And, and move it forward that way. But I mean, I didn't realize that some of these items we had talked about didn't get put in here. And I looked at it and I wasn't sure about what, what we had finally decided either.
We got head nods on several items. I know within the executive's budget, we had, we basically just agreed to put the number in there, but, and then we were going to vote for it altogether, but we did not vote to amend it all. We just put the numbers in there. So the changes aren't made until we amend it. I know, for example, overtime, we had zeroed that one out. The seasoned employees, we had zeroed that one out. What you guys just passed did not do that. The travel budget, we had that one at 3,000. We had the non-capitalized equipment, we had zeroed that one out. But there were some questions about that. Professional and technical, there were questions about that one. We had not voted on, on that one as of yet. Education and training, we had that one lowered. And miscellaneous services, we had lowered that one to 750. The rest of them was the same. Those were items that we had talked about, but we did not vote in the form of an amendment to change those. We got kind of derailed and a little long-winded explanations. And, and then we'd also even, we got, we talked about even the possibly lowering the full-time employees account. But none of those were voted on, but as of right now, you guys have voted just to leave those all the same. So no progress has been made. So we'll move on. On the agenda. I think the first two, or the first item, 11A is pretty well taken care of. That one's tomorrow night. County officials' day on hill. Who will be attending that? We could tell Micah right now that he can get the registration taken care of on that one.
I will be going. I will be there.
I'd like to go.
Plan to go at this point.
Yeah, put a question mark on me. I've got to double check my calendar.
I mean, yes.
Nolan?
I'm checking. So I'm like Carl and I may be.
I will plan on going on that one too. I will plan on going on that one, too. Okay, eleven C. This one here, I guess we'll just kind of have just an open, a statement on this one, and then we'll be done tonight, right? It was agreed upon, and the forensic audit is officially completed. It is actually open for anyone to read. It is on the website, as of five o'clock today, right around five o'clock, I believe. And with a couple of statements, and that is complete, and it pretty well speaks for itself. There's about three hundred and twenty-four pages in that, of which I think the first, how many pages, thirty-something? Thirty-something has kind of a, the synopsis of what that is all about. And we'll let that speak for itself, so we will, at that point, I think we're done for the meeting. Let's go to council member reports. Mark, anything?
I don't have anything, thanks.
I met this morning with Giselle at the senior center, and she's gonna come probably January, February to give a presentation to the council. I guess in past years, we've done a workshop at the senior center. I think that might be appropriate right now to kind of just make sure everyone's aware of the financial situation they're in, the needs that they have, building-wise, space-wise, parking lot. There's, there's just a lot going on, and I feel like it would be nice if we all kind of understood that as we move forward. So I told her that we would talk to Micah about putting something on the agenda about that, moving forward.
I remember doing the, I'll call it a field trip over there, and I rather enjoyed it because I was able to get a better understanding of how the program works and everything, so I'd like, I like that idea.
Okay, that's my report.
Excellent. Carl?
Oh, well, only that, I apologize if I have led us astray here. But hopefully, going forward and into the new year, we can address each of these items that we had concerns about specifically and in a, and in an organized way, in some budget openings, so that we can do the right things.
Barbara?
Thank you.
I just have a suggestion. With Cassel, I would really like some more training, from what I understand, because Micah could help me with that. But I think it'd be a good idea if all of us had some more intensive training. And then my suggestion is, is each of us be assigned, and it was suggested, maybe the departments that we're liaisons with. We watch those lines for that department and then report in, you know, on our council member reports, on any of that. So that's my suggestion and something to think about.
I think that's excellent. But to do that, we would need some.
Training, yeah.
Some, a little bit more training to.
I know I do, yeah.
Just to get around in, in, in that program, so. Nolan?
Nothing.
Just to piggyback on our trip to San Francisco, I think we were represented really well by our representative from Science Bank Public Finance. He prepared, you know, our presentation, we just went to, to present it, and Maggie and our executive both did an excellent job. Moody's, Alex told us after we left, they told us how well we did in the presentation at the end, our underwriters. And, and as we left, Alex said, I've never had that experience happen before. So I felt like it was, I was dragging my feet, did not want to go, but I do feel like it was beneficial, and he even came back and said, yeah, we'll, we definitely see this being a double-A. And just in background, we can't be a triple-A because of our size, our county's size, so the highest we can get is, is double-A something. But he did come back and say that, so I have to say, I think it was benefi, I, I do feel it was very beneficial for us to go.
Thank you for doing.
It was a whirlwind, and it was fast, but it was, I think it was beneficial, so.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Can I add one more thing, I just want to wish everyone Merry Christmas, everybody out there.
Thank you.
And Merry Christmas to all of you.
I will, this year has, has been quite a year. I am, I am very proud of all the, the headways and the things that we've been able to do and the hard decisions that we've had, we have made this year. I think they have been very formidable, and I think that we've had to stand up on some things, and we've made some hard decisions. But I, I feel like we have turned the corner to things that will become better. I was hoping to turn that corner a little more tonight, but those, I think we have turned that corner, and this next year, I'm hoping for that we just keep that momentum going to the good and positive things for the county and get back to the culture that the county deserves to have, that we used to have. And it was powerful back then, workability, everything, and the forensic audit addresses a lot of that. We have actually moved on a lot of things on the forensic audit for us, and kind of been ahead of that, and done real well. And I compliment each of you for your participation, help, and encouragement in that. It has not been easy this year, and it has not been fun. But it, in the long run, it will be worthwhile. That's all I can really say, but I appreciate all that help, that we've really, we've really, I think, kudos to all of you on the council, appreciate you all. And saying at this point, it isn't bad to forget about a few things and we move on to a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That in mind?